Nucleus is made up of protons and neutrons, these are called nucleons. The force between nucleons is seen irrespective of their charges. The force between nucleons is seen irrespective of their charges. Alpha particle consists of two protons and two neutrons only. The volume occupied by an atom is greater than the volume... The volume occupied by an atom is greater than the volume of the nucleus by a factor of 100. Volume the... The nucleus represented by the... A nucleus represented by the simple ZAX has... Nucleus has Z number of protons and E minus Z number of neutrons. Mass number of nucleus is sometimes equal to its atomic number. Mass number of nucleus is sometimes equal to its atomic number. In the nucleus of 23 sodium, the number of proton, neutron, electrons are... 11. 11, 12, 11. Number of protons are 11. Neutrons are... 12. And electrons are... Zero nucleus. Calculate average atomic mass. Hmm, it's tricking me out. Calculate average atomic mass of chlorine. If it's two isotopes having mass number 35 and 37 are found in the ratio 75 to 25 percent. Calculate average atomic mass of chlorine. It's two isotopes having mass 35 found in the ratio 75 to 25. Mass number 35 and 75. 35.5 which one of the following pairs of nuclei are isotones. Isotones are, which have equal number of neutrons. 27 is 20 divided by then volume of X. The volume of Y is even by A2. Volume of X 27 by... 125. If radius of aluminium is... It's taken to be R A N, then radius of TE is nearly... Radius is equal to 27 by... 3 and 5. 5 by 3. If the nucleus... Has a nuclear radius about 3.6. And that of TE, what happens 5 by 3? 6. The ratio of radio of nuclei is approximately... Ratio of radii... Or the nuclei is approximately 3 by 5. Point 6. If the nuclear radii of 3.6 for me... If the nuclear radius of... Is 3.6, the approximate nuclear radius of... 27.6. 4.8. The radius of G is... The radius of germanium nuclei is measured to be twice the radius of the... The radius of germanium nuclei... Twice the radius of... Nucleons. E equals 3/3. And its... 8 into 9. 72. The mass number of helium is... The mass number of helium is 4. Mass number of helium is 4, that of sulfur is 32. The radius of sulfur nucleus is larger than that of helium. By factor of 2, the nucleus ruptures into 2 nuclear parts. A nucleus ruptures into 2 nuclear parts which have their velocities in the ratio... 2 is to 1, what will be the ratio of the nuclear sizes, radii, velocity and radii? Nucleus ruptures into 2 nuclear parts which have their velocities in the ratio of 2 is to 1. What will be the ratio of their nuclear sizes or radii? Do we have velocity? We don't have velocity. Which have the velocity in the ratio of 2 is to 1. A nucleus ruptures into 2 nuclear parts which have their velocities in the ratio... Where velocity is given in the ratio. Velocity given here. Velocity is 2 is to 1. What will be the ratio of the nuclear size, radii? It's inversely proportional. 2 nuclei have their masses, have their mass number in the ratio 1 is to 3. 2 nuclei have their mass number... In the ratio 1 is to 3. Ratio of the nuclear densities would be... 1 is to 1. The mass density of a nucleus varies with mass number as constant. Alpha particle consists of... Which ray contains... This is decay form. Radio after 300. Which nucleus stable? Which ray contains positive charged particles? Which ray contains positive charged particles? Alpha rays. Alpha rays are helium nucleus which are positively charged. Beta rays are negative charged. Alpha particles are darkly charged helium ion. Beta decay electron. Alpha particles are ionized helium atom. There are no electrons inside nucleus, so from where? Particle comes actually, a neutron inside nucleus converts into a proton and... A neutron inside nucleus converts into... To a proton minus 1, 0. It is emitted in this process. One proton and one electron. And this is chargeless, massless, rest mass is zero invisible ghost particle. Delta M, MN minus MP plus ME. Q Delta NC square. MN minus MP plus ME. Q MN minus MP plus ME. Into 931.5 mega electron hand. Anti-neutrino. Why anti-neutrino? Charge for beta decay. Q for beta decay. X and Y, decolite plus X is Y and electron. P Y is 0. Kinetic energy is very high then. All energy is taken by electron as kinetic energy. Kinetic energy for, energy for beta decay. 1 neutrino, 1 neutron gets 1 proton and 1 electron plus anti-neutrino particle. Q is equal to MN minus MP plus MC into C square. Which nucleus stable, stability belt? Which nucleus stable stability belt? Okay, number of nucleus, number of proton 80. Proton, proton repel due to electrostatic force, nuclear force, short range force always attractive. Force between neutron and neutron similar to proton and proton and N to N. Z less than equal to 20, 20th exit. N by P is one stable. If the number of neutrons, protons is stable. Number of neutrons and protons. Stability belt, okay? Then this is N by P ratio is less and N by P ratio is high. This is beta decay and this is alpha decay. Beta positive decay and beta negative decay. N is equal to sideline. Least stable nuclei is of bismuth which is 299. Least stable nucleus is called bismuth which is... Upset more than 20. It is almost equal to 1, but for Z more than 20. N by P is more than 1 but less than 1.6 stable. N by Z is more than 26. Most stable iron. For Z more than 83, no stable nuclei. For Z more than 83, there is no stable nuclei. Alpha decay, alpha particle double charged helium ion, 2 neutron, 2 proton. Charges to U, masses for N. Some of atomic number and some of mass number is concerned. The work for me, period nucleus AXZ, helium make a year, A minus 4, 7 minus 2, 2 times energy. Thoorius, this is... This uranium may say, can I come down? Actinostan, there are thorius. Energy in alpha decay. Energy in alpha decay, in spontaneous nuclear reactions, some mass always disappears, this is called mass defect. Energy in alpha decay, in spontaneous nuclear reactions, some mass always disappears, this is called mass defect. Mass defect is Delta M is equal to M mass of reactant minus product. MX minus M alpha plus NY. This mass now appears in the form of energy. Delta MN to 931.5 mega electron hand. Momentum conservation, NY by Z equal to M alpha by alpha. Kinetic energy of alpha particle and daughter nuclei in terms of heat. Kinetic energy is equal to heat, mass of Y upon mass of I plus mass of alpha. Kinetic energy of Y, mass of alpha upon mass of I plus mass of alpha. Most part of... In the most part of energies and part of 2, alpha particle, that's why kinetic energy of alpha particles is very high than that of I. Beta decay, this beta negative and beta positive, beta negative minus 1 electron. And this is proton, anti-particle of electron. Mass same, spin opposite to data of electron, charge opposite to electron. Electron or positron, electron emission. Or beta particle emission, AZ. AZX. Beta particle, A has it, Z plus 1. C protein isotope radioactive. There are no electrons in the nucleus. There are no electrons in the nucleus, so from there, beta particle comes. A neutron inside nucleus converts to proton and electron is emitted in the process. Anti-neutrino conserve energy and spin momentum, chargeless, massless, rest mass zero invisible ghost particle. Delta M is equal to MN plus MP, MN minus MP plus ME. And what was it? NY minus... Hmm. MX minus M alpha plus M by. Energy for B negative decay. Neutron release proton and electron, kinetic energy of electron is very high. All heat energy is taken by beta particle or electron as kinetic. So experiment was proven that different beta particles from same sample of nuclei have different kinetic energies. But it is less than heat, more than zero, less than heat. To conserve energy, anti-neutrino is emitted, number of beta particles in kinetic energy. Kinetic energy of beta particle plus kinetic energy of... Anti-neutrino emitted to conserve energy and spin momentum. Electron, sorry, positron emission. Plus beta zero. Z minus 1. Should be positive, right? There are no positrons inside the nucleus. Proton inside nucleus converts to a neutron. The proton converts into neutron plus positron. Non-spontaneous extracts energy from binding energy of nucleus. 10 MP minus MN plus... What was it? MN minus MP plus ME. This is MP minus, MN plus ME which is negative. Electron capture in heavy nucleus. Sometimes when beta decay is difficult to happen, electron capture occurs alternate or beta decay. Proton in nucleus follows occasion electron and converts to neutron. N to P, anti-neutrino, P to N neutron. Gamma decay, EMW. EMW, electromagnetic wave. Radioactive decay. When the radioactive isotope decays in a series by emission of 3 alpha particles and a beta particle, the isotope X which remains. And decay is... Alpha particle is 2/4. Beta particle is... 58. 7. 51. 67.50. Sorry, it's coming 83. Sorry, it's coming eighty three. Should be plus one, right? And a beta particle, three alpha particles, six. And two point four. Twelve. Minus twelve. Two minus one. Then it should have two six to about eight, fifty three is maybe. Six minus one is five, five eighty three. A radioactive nucleus undercoza series of decay according to this scheme. If mass number and atomic number are what are the number of numbers for A four? Alpha, beta, alpha and gamma decay. Did I study gamma decay yet? Gamma decay. Gamma not a particle, E M V radiation, photon or light. Photon of light, mega electron volt photon, rest mass is zero, charge is zero. Just like the energy levels of electron, they exist different energy level of nucleus. Sometimes after emission of alpha or beta particle, nucleus, that usually exceeds the top in part of energy. The nucleus immediately falls back to ground state and this process of photon is emitted, gamma photon. Rest mass is zero, charge is zero, nothing, nil. So this question, radioactive nucleus, it must have been alpha particle nuclei. Okay, E one key would be one eighty minus four, one seventy six and seventy two, seventy. This time, E two will be, beta particle ni kaya hai, one seventy six, as it is and beta particle is minus one, sixty nine. E three again alpha particle. One seventy two. Six and two sixty seven. And A four is gamma particle, that's it, one seventy two, one sixty seven. One seventy two and sixty nine eight. Set of gamma is been released. Seventy E one, beta particle is one sixty nine, then alpha particle is removed, it has to be sixty seven, right? One seventy two with sixty seven. A four. Why is it sixty nine? Just like the energy level of electron, there exists different energy levels of nucleus also. Sometimes after emission of alpha or beta particle nucleus reaches excited state. A nucleus immediately falls back to ground state and this process of photon is emitted, gamma photon. Nature helium nucleus, electron of high energy electromagnetic radiation, mass charged double electron, E zero, electromagnetic towards negative pole, towards positive polar nil. Speed ten power seven, ten power eight. Electromagnetic three into ten power eight. Ionizing power ten power four. Into gamma. Ten power two into gamma, ten thousand times, hundred times and minimum. Penetrating is minimum, ten power two into ten power four times. Zinc, Z L S, zinc sulfide screen, strong effect, less and least. Speed of gamma is very high, ionization potential of alpha is high and penetration power of gamma is high. Liquid nature of radioactive radiation, a component which could hardly pass through zero point one centimeter thick aluminium foil called alpha rays. A component which could hardly pass through zero point one centimeter thick aluminium foil called alpha rays. Component which could hardly pass through zero point one centimeter thick aluminium foil called alpha rays. A component which was stopped by five mm thick aluminium sheet beta rays. A component which could pass through thirty centimeter thick iron piece, gamma rays. Zero point one centimeter thick aluminium foil called alpha rays. A component which could hardly pass through zero point one centimeter thick aluminium foil called alpha rays. A component which was electrical nature of radioactive radiation, a component which was stopped by five mm thick aluminium sheet beta rays. It could hardly pass through zero point one centimeter thick aluminium foil. All right, now, let's move on. This is one by ten, two ten power, ten power minus three. Five into ten power minus three and thirty centimeter. Thirty into ten power minus two meter. A compound which was stopped by five mm thick aluminium sheet. See, this is one mm thick, this is five mm thick, so one mm is just alpha rays. A component which could hardly pass through, so one mm is just for alpha. So obviously, about this, penetration of alpha is very high. And then a compound which could be stopped by five mm thick, if I am going thick, it can pass through. Beta rays and this could reach two. Three hundred mm thick, that is gamma rays, penetration power. A component which could hardly pass through, this alpha rays, beta rays and gamma rays deflect by alpha, beta, gamma and electric field. This is an electric field, alpha rays towards negative charge, beta rays towards positive and gamma rays underevated. Beta deviates more than alpha due towards small mass. Okay, in magnetic field, alpha, beta deviate in circular path. Again, beta deviates more than alpha, it is small mass. Law of radioactive decay, Radford and Saudi law. Law of radioactive decay, Radford and Saudi law, number of nuclei N not, they decay at T zero. At T eight twenty, only N are left, after D T, T plus D T and minus D N are left. So rate of decay is minus D N by D T and time D T. Rate of decay is directly proportional to number of undeclared and nuclear in the sample. How many alpha, beta particles will be emitted when ninety two to nine changes to? Four, ninety two, eight bajar. Eight, four, four, two alpha particle. Two. Three, four. Two, right, two, two, four, four, four. Four alpha particle, they cannot, four, sixteen. Two to minus sixteen, sixteen. Eight. Six, I got, six four and twenty four. Minus one, beta zero, five minus, which I got, twelve. Okay, next, four. Four, in nine ninety four, four extra, four beta, six alpha and four beta. The most penetrating radiation out of the following are gamma nucleus exists, emits one alpha particle and two beta particle. One alpha particle. M minus four and two beta particles, N minus two. Plus two. N minus four, in the nuclear decay given below, X. The particles emitted in the sequence are, routed by is Z plus one. T minus four and A minus four. There should not be any difference. Ah, in this alpha particle, beta, alpha and gamma, beta, alpha, gamma. Number of beta particles emitted by number of beta particles emitted by a radioactive substance is twice the number of alpha particles. Number of beta particles emitted by radioactive substance. Are twice the number of alpha particles emitted by it. Alpha is just one. The resulting daughter is an isotope of parent. Minus two plus two, they cancel out. In a radioactive decay process. Radioactive decay process, the negatively charged emitted beta particles are in a radioactive decay process, the negatively charged emitted beta particles are electron produced as a result of decay of neutron inside the nucleus. Nuclear reaction given by represents beta decay. A neutron is bombarded, neutron is one H two. On eight O sixteen nucleus, then alpha particle is emitted. Alpha two, the product nucleus is sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, eight, nine. Uh, minus four and minus two, minus four is fourteen and nine minus two is seven. Nitrogen. For the given reaction, the particle X is a neutrino. What is, what is the respective number of alpha and beta particle emitted in the following radioactive decay? Two hundred minus one sixty eight. N minus eight is two, three, thirty two, five four, sixteen. Eight, four. Eight and six. The nucleus, six carbon well, absorbs an energetic neutron, emits a beta particle, the resulting nucleus is energetic neutron. The resulting nucleus is seven and an element A decays into an element A decays into an element C by two steps. Billion, in P C, two electrons. Then A and C are isotopes. Decay constant, N is equal to N naught, E to the power minus lambda T. Time field at one by lambda. N is equal to N naught, zero point three six eight. N is equal to thirty six point eight percent. Number of nuclei left undeclared, thirty six point eight. That decay is sixty three point two. Two radioactive material of experiment. Thirty one. Two. Two radioactive materials, X one and X two have decay constant. Five lambda and lambda respectively. If initially they have same number of nuclei, then the ratio of number of nuclei, X one to X two will be one by E after a time. Minus D N by D T is equal to lambda N, log N is equal to minus log N is equal to minus lambda T plus log N. Then it is equal to N naught. T half decay for first order reaction. They open six centre by lambda, number of nuclei after end half life, end naught by two to the power. Activity after end half life or naught by See, the radioactive material X one and X two have decay constant. So there, decay constant is lambda. Five lambda and lambda, if initially they have same number of nuclei and not. Then the ratio number of nuclei of X one to that of X two will be one by E after a time. One by E after time. And by lambda. Let um each here. Five lambda and lambda. They have same number of nuclei, which is N naught. They have same number of nuclei, if the ratio or number of nuclei to that of X two will be one by E after the time.